Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the Arvada City Council Meeting for today, July 15, 2025. I apologize that we are getting a little bit of a late start. We had quite a significant amount of executive business to cover upstairs, and those conversations just sometimes take the time that they take. So for those of you who have stuck with us, I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you all for being here, and again, I apologize that we had to go over. But we're going to get started now. I will call upon Councilmember Davis for the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance.
Please take a moment of quiet reflection with me. And now the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, a nation indivisible, indivisible in its essence.
Thank you. Ms. Rushif, you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Simpson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for July 1, 2025. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, those stand approved. We have no recognitions this evening, so we'll move straight into public comment for issues not scheduled on the agenda. The first name I have for this is Edwin Goddard.
That was fast. I left your photographs there. This tree is on the corner of 72nd and Miller Street, and it's leaning about at a 40-degree angle over across the traffic. And I figure if it hasn't already taken the top off of a semi truck, it will one day, or some dark, stormy, cold, rainy night, that's going to tip over right into the middle of traffic, and I just wish you guys would see if you could get it taken down.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. All right. And my apologies. I will also note that council doesn't have the ability to respond to public comment during this time, but somebody will be in touch with you about your concerns. Yes. And name and address when you approach the microphone. So next, we have Tom DiAgostino. And I do know we've had a number of folks had to leave due to the delay, so I apologize for that. Frank Ferrianaro, I know you're here for the public hearing, so did you want to go separately, or would you like to go during the public hearing? This is for items not on the hearing agenda.
With what I did want to discuss today, it does involve what is on the agenda today, as well as adjacent issues, so it keeps it more congruent to what we're talking about than just the issue of the agenda.
Perfect. We'll have you go during the public hearing then.
Thank you.
Chuck St. John? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Chuck St. John, 12775 West 67th Way, Arvada, 8004. And I wanted to comment on the proposed possible change to the land development code that could allow a hospital to be built in a park. And I worry that once you open up that door, that it will not be limited to just parks, but possibly open spaces. Parks and open spaces are a huge part of why we live in Arvada. Not only do they provide buffer zones from neighborhoods to neighborhoods, neighborhoods to businesses, but it's great for all of our mental health. And the other thing I was thinking about is, I've never heard of any city, and there may be some, someplace, that has torn down a building to put in a park. Maybe that's done someplace, and I don't see... The biggest problem with that, I see, is that once the land is gone, it's gone. Once you make that change, it's never going to come back. And like I said, my biggest concern too is, what's the next step to that? Is it just this park? Or does that open the door to development in parks and open spaces? And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Pat Malone. I believe Pat is one of the ones who had to leave. Len Clements.
She left.
As did Len. Karen Gerbach, I believe you're here.
Karen Gerbach, 6872 Juniper Court, Arvada. Mr. St. John just covered one of my points, which is, you know, looking at open space, we're concerned about that land development code change with adding public facilities such as libraries, other public utilities, public schools, community centers, cultural institutions, and government facilities. There was another point that's a concern with the amount of discretion in the land development code changes given to the Director of Planning, and we would like to bring that up in a further time. And then with the discretion of the Planning Director, I had originally talked to the Planning Commission about that with allowing administrative approvals for things to go through. And that included the RV storage facility, which, you know, you're all aware of. And that made us stay tonight with the executive session you had on legal issues on that issue. So, thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Matt Teegarden. Thanks for still being here, Matt.
I'm sorry?
Thanks for still being here.
Oh, yeah. I'm retired.
[laughter]
Good evening. My name's Matt Teegarden. I live at 1009 West 68th Avenue, Arvada, 8004. My wife and I have lived in Arvada since 1992. We raised our three children here, and I spent the last 21 years of my career serving as a social worker at Arvada High School. This community is our home, and like you, I care deeply about its future. Last month, I wrote to Chief Ed Brady to express my appreciation for the professionalism of the Arvada Police Department and to voice my concern about the potential weaponization of law enforcement by the Trump administration. Across the nation, we're seeing troubling trends that threaten our democratic norms. The Trump administration has undermined the rule of law and democratic institutions, weaponized law enforcement and surveillance, and attacked the free press and civil liberties, particularly around dissent. On July 10, The New York Times reported the FBI is using polygraphs to root out internal dissent. That same day, Wired reported that the Department of Homeland Security is urging police forces to redefine common protest behavior as violent tactics. These are not isolated overreaches; they are strategic moves toward authoritarian control, similar moves being taken by the National Security Director, Tulsi Gabbard. Law enforcement officers walk the line between liberty and social order, which is both necessary and lawful. That line is under political pressure like never before. I ask this council to stand firm in defending the rule of law, civil rights, and democratic values, especially the right of dissent. Arvada and America's strengths lie in commitment to principle, not in blind compliance to authority that stands above the law. I respectfully ask you to review the full letter I've submitted and reject all attempts to co-op those who serve and protect our community into tools of tyranny. Let me close with the words of FBI Director Cash Patel and Deputy FBI Director Dan Bongino posted publicly within a year of their respective appointments. Patel, "We're blessed by God to have Donald Trump as our juggernaut of justice, to be our leader, our continued warrior in the arena." Bongino, "The irony about this for the scumbag commie libs is that the Cold War they've been pushing for really badly for them. Libs are the biggest profane word, vulgar word, starting with a P, I've ever seen, and they use others to do their dirty work. Their mamas are still doing their laundry form as they celebrate tonight that their long-sought goal, the destruction of the republic, has been reached, but they are not ready for what comes next." I would say to all, and my time is up, that I proudly stand to the left politically. I love my country, and I'm the opposition, not the enemy. And I'm counting on local government to protect my right to love our country like everybody else. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And apologize.
It's okay. Mr. Mike Rollick.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thanks for having me speak here today. My name is Mike Rollick, 18735 West 59 Tribe Golden, Colorado 80403, on behalf of Rallston Valley Coalition. And just wanted to talk about psilocybin loss. Colorado Municipal League put out a one-pager called "How Are Municipalities Regulating Natural Medicine?" Taylor McGahy is a law clerk. And it says here, the primary way that municipalities can regulate natural medicine facilities is through zoning. They talk about time. You're allowed to regulate the time for natural medicine facilities. Some have gone 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., or 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. Other municipalities, more restrictive, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., which might be a little restrictive, but that's something you can look at, definitely for sure. Place. I have not seen a reference to CERS 4450-302. Section D mentions a thousand-foot setback that's required by state law for any school or childcare facility or preschool from a natural medicine facility, not the one that does the cultivation, but the one that actually does the treatment. But Parker went a step further and said that same thousand-foot setback is good for residents as well. I would suggest that maybe we can take a look at a residential setback as well, kind of follow in the footsteps of what Parker did, and the manner is something you can look at as well. Security facilities, safe storage of natural medicine, potential nuisances can be covered as well. What Parker did is they actually talked about all kinds of different things, including HVAC, secure storage of facilities, secure storage of waste, how to make sure you're not having stuff outside, drainage, you can't have the water from a cultivation facility get out into the waterways, into the alleys, and what have you, because it could have spores in them and things like that, you know? And then they got into also butane and other combustible gases and liquids to make sure you're not using hazmat. And real quick, just a quick reference to 1CCR 213-1, they talk about the secure facility information that the state requires, but it's a 100-page document. Maybe a few quick references for city as well, including secure facility information, visitor logs, regulated natural medicine waste logs, current owner and employee list, and emergency plans, things like that. Some of these might be better for the state, some could be definitely good for local as well. And they also talked about here that the law says that they should allow for all local fire department building inspectors and code enforcement. So it's probably a good idea to have this referenced in the new LDC code, not against psilocybin. I've had friends who had PTSD who have benefited from the treatment, but definitely some protections might help. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we have Robert Williams. I think he might be one of the ones who also had to take off, which is completely fine. So is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment? Gina Halasy. Apologies, I did. Your form got caught up with the one before it, Gina. My apologies. You know I love hearing from you.
Gina Halasy, 14626 West 68th Place, Arvada. So first thing I want to do is I want to thank the city for giving Maple Valley and Shadow Mountain, I'll speak for my sister neighborhood, RCWPP grants. We recently did those projects in June. They were super successful. We had over a third of our neighborhood participate in creating defensible space and cleaning up and trimming trees leaning on fences and houses and things like that. They loved the fact that we had these roll-offs in our neighborhood that we could utilize, and they didn't have to figure out how to get rid of that slash. So that was super successful. 22 homes signed up for the fire safety assessment, so we're looking forward to that happening. And people have told us that they want us to do this type of activity yearly. It was a great gathering at the park with the two neighborhoods, getting educated by the fire department. Chris Warren was great, and Brian Wilkerson. So thank you to whoever gave us that grant money, because it helps when you're a really small volunteer-run HOA, to have that support. And it did good work, so I just wanted to let you know that. So I do think that the reason we protect our open spaces and we care about our homes and our neighborhoods in Arvada is because of, we all, like the gentleman said, we all love where we live. And we want to protect our natural resources, our health and safety of our citizens. We also know that over the years, especially in West Arvada, things have happened under the ground there that we're just all finding out as things get developed. There's a landfill over here, you know, some sort of waste over here from all the greenhouses. There's lots of different things that happen. Our creek is polluted, so we've been researching this ever since 2021. So we do know that it's very fragile. So I think that's what people want, to make sure that as you go through the land development process with the code, you know, you're very cognizant of, is it protecting citizens? Is it protecting the natural resources? And is it compatible? So there's 67 of those changes in there, and I guess I've been trying to figure it out, we have been for a while now, the why. Why are you making... Some of them, they say it's grammar or whatever, but why not split it up a little bit? Take the four or five that are really hot-button, you know, open space ones, and the mushroom one, and a couple different things, director discretion, and talk about some of those things where the community can engage and have a voice and be a part of the process. Because I think people know that when the land development code is changed, it's the law, and then it becomes, if I'm not mistaken, a use-by right for a developer. If it says it in the code, we get to do it. And I just think the citizens would like to have a little bit more input about what happens in their backyard. So I'm not an MB, I'm not a YIMBY, I'm a SIMBY, compatibility in my backyard. So I just want to end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment? Please come forward. Name and address for the public record.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor and Chamber. Mike Schweitzer, 14615 West 63rd, 62nd Place, I got to remember where I live, 8004. I'm going to follow up to what Gina just said and ask for something. There's 67 amendments to the LDC. Gina asked the question, we were asking the question, why are so widespread? Some of them have pretty severe impacts. One of them that I'll mention is the adoption of properties for alkaline hydrolysis, for methods to liquefy human remains rather than cremation. So I'll suggest something that Gina touched on, that I recommend that the city council adopt a forum to analyze these amendments further, a public forum. You know you've got some pretty significant subject matter experts in town, and we presented a significant amount of information to Planning Commission, and they bypassed all of that and passed on the voting for LDC to the city council. So I'll just request and implore that we have a forum before the vote happens to get further analysis and allow for public comment on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. They are R25-060, a resolution authorizing the First Amendment to a lease agreement by and between the City of Arvada and T-Mobile West LLC, formerly Clear Wireless LLC, and R25-061, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and Jefferson County for inclusion portions of Quaker Street owned by the City of Arvada into Jefferson County's Mill and Overlay Project for an amount not to exceed $83,637.24. Councilmember Davis.
I can make the motion if there's no discussion.
There's no discussion.
I move that R25-060 and R25-061 be approved.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. We have no first readings this evening, so I'll move us straight into the public hearings portion of the agenda and open CB 25-014, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 2-95, Departments Established, and retitling, repealing, and reenacting Section 2-96, Department Titles of Arvada City Code to Reflect Changes in Department Names and Department Director Titles, Ordinance Number 4900. Our presenter this evening is Mr. Zachary Woolweaver, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Zachary Woolweaver. As the mayor just mentioned, I am with the City Attorney's Office. Recently, as council is aware, the city underwent a reorganization to combine the Department of Public Works and the Department of Utilities into one Department of Infrastructure. The agenda item is intended to clean up sections of the code, the city code, to make I apologize. Make uniform references to the Department of Infrastructure and the Director of Infrastructure rather than the Department of Public Works and the Director of Public Works and so forth. The additional formatting changes are just to make the sections that are affected, Section 295 and 296, to fit with the current standards of our city code. With that, the Arvada team would recommend that the city council approve CB 25-014, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Sections 295, Departments Established, and retitling, repealing, and reenacting Sections 296, Department Titles of Arvada City Code to Reflect the Changes.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to give public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will open it for council questions or action. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I'll make a motion if there's no questions.
I see no other lights.
I move that Council Bill 25-014, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 2-95, Departments Established, and retitling, repealing, and reenacting Section 2-96, Department Titles of the Arvada City Code to Reflect Changes in the Department Names and Department Director Titles be approved on final reading, Number 4900, in order published by Title Only.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Our second hearing this evening is CB 25-015, an ordinance amending, repealing, and reenacting various sections of Article III, Fire Restrictions or Bans of Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code, Ordinance Number 4901. Mr. Wick, you have this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The purpose of this amendment is to address fire restrictions or bans that are issued by Jefferson County and going into effect automatically in the City of Arvada. Under the current ordinance, there is no action on the city manager's part on the restriction issued by Jefferson County until such time as the city manager has the opportunity to review the information, receive input from the Arvada Fire Protection District, and then approve or not the restriction or the ban for the city. The availability of the city manager to conduct these reviews and approvals leaves a gap between the time that the restriction or ban is declared by Jefferson County and the time that the manager has an opportunity to review and take action on the restriction or ban for the City of Arvada. With this ordinance amendment, the restriction or ban becomes automatic, and therefore, there is no gap between the time that Jefferson County issues the order for the restriction or ban and having this restriction or ban in place for the City of Arvada. The city manager can still review the restriction or the ban and modify the automatic restriction or ban based upon the totality of circumstances and information available. With the automatic ban, our communications team will be notified that Jefferson County has ordered a restriction or ban, and they will coordinate with Jefferson County, the Arvada Fire Protection District, and other relevant jurisdiction or organizations to coordinate the release of public information regarding this restriction or ban, which is what we do right now without this amendment. Withdrawing the restriction or ban requires that the city manager review the information to ensure that the information and evidence to support a withdrawal exists. The city manager may modify or withdraw the restriction or the ban in the best interest of the city. If the city manager determines that it is appropriate to withdraw from the restriction or the ban, the communications team will then coordinate with the appropriate agencies and jurisdictions to communicate this to the public that the withdrawal has occurred with the restriction or the ban. So in summary, what this amendment is doing is closing that gap between the time that Jefferson County issues a ban or a restriction, and essentially eliminates the gap between that order and the time that there is to review, and instead makes that an automatic ban. And unless there's information that would require us to do something different, that ban would stay in place until information is reviewed that would allow a withdrawal in coordination with Jefferson County, Arvada Fire, and other relevant agencies.
Thank you. I know we have one public comment for this evening that has signed up, Mr. Frank Ferrianaro?
Ferrianaro.
Ferrianaro?
Excellent.
Good evening. My name is Frank Ferrianaro, and I'm the manager of Penzi Spices in Old Town, Arvada, at 7511 Grandview Avenue. And that business has been, as of October of this year, that business will have been there in Old Town for 19 years. It's one of 45 locations across the nation, but it's the first one in the state of Colorado. We've proudly been a part of this community for a very long time now, and we've seen all of the different changes that have come. In these chambers, there have been countless complaints about the unhoused population, but we do not like to be complaint-based, we like to be solution-based. So rather than complaining about what's not being done, we do like to utilize our resources, which are great, to try to help our nonprofit and our food and secure organizations here in the area. But now, as we get to this new situation where we're dealing with the changing and fire code codification, I was very excited to see how specific the codification was. For at least the half-decade, we've pleaded with the city and with conjunction of our landlord to try to get a collapsible security gate just for the front of our recessed entryway. Whether it's a windy day, whether it's snowy, whether it's rainy, it does tend to attract unhoused people that want to camp in the area. And with that, whether it is rainy or snowy or precipitous, they do need some sort of fire, whether it's to keep warm, cook food, or cook and ingest their drugs. With these drugs that they are using, how they are choosing to light them involves propane torches, acetylene torches, sometimes other forms of fire tools that are specifically codified in this new bill. If it can be enforced, including the size of the fire, I'm very excited for that. The building that we are in is 119 years old. Old Town, Arvada, just turned 120 years old. The building we inhabit used to be the Old Town, Arvada Navy Surplus Building. We're woven into the fabric of this community, but even though we came in there to sell culinary herbs and spices, unfortunately, we filled this place with wooden shelves with jars that are filled with sawdust and dried leaves. With this increased amount of fire risk, but we have a business that's been a part of this community for 20 years that the community frequents with the same frequency and excitement that they would their grocery store, to buy gifts, meals, ingredients for the food that they want to feed their community, we want to protect our community as much as possible. Our grants have been... Our grants, or sorry, our requests for permits for this gate have been repeatedly denied because it will take away from the cosmetic charm of Old Town as opposed to be an asset to public safety, even though we have worked specifically with a manufacturer that will help to work with the historic bones as well as the aesthetic of the building. So with this specific codification, I hope that it does put into law that public safety and fire safety is just as important as community cosmetic aesthetics. So with this, whether we do get a gate or not, I'm happy to provide another resource to the city and trying to make sure that we try to help our unhoused population be so much of a drain to the resources of whether it's either the police department, the sheriff's department, the fire department, or the correctional facilities. So if there's any way we can utilize our resources and our finances for what we have, we're happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. We do. All right. Sorry, we're gossiping about how we like your voice. [laughter] It's very nice. So is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak to this item at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and I will open it to council questions or action. Councilmember Davis.
If there's no discussion, I'll make the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Mormon?
I do have a question. I appreciate you bringing this forward, City Manager Wick, and my question is, is this a best practice that we're seeing other communities in, you know, the Front Range or in Colorado doing? It makes sense to me, and I'm just curious if others are doing that as well.
So I don't know that I know the answer. I may ask Megan, or maybe our colleague from Arvada Fire may have additional information on that. I don't think we're aware of any others. You know, the issue for us is, as you know, the west end of our community is really subject to wildfire, and by having this automatic ban or restriction in place, it just makes everything immediately affect...
it just makes everything immediately effective instead of having to wait for me to review this and work with Arvada Fire to make those decisions. It just happens. And then, you know, we can look at that at another time. But for the safety measure of everyone involved, in our opinion, the automatic ban that would occur in the city just makes sense. And, you know, especially given the fact that we're so close to the wild land-urban interface anyway. So, but if you would like, I can check on that and see whether or not there's other jurisdictions that are doing this.
I would appreciate that. But I mean, I guess, you know, I'm just trying to think of other situations in which this would not work well for us to have an, I mean, I can't think of it, but I'm just curious if there's anything that you can think of where we would need to come back and say, no, we don't want that ban at this time for this given reason.
So if that was to happen, if a circumstance came up, we could revoke the automatic. And there may be, we did try to think through any of the scenarios where that might be the case, and we didn't, we didn't come up with any. As you know, you know, we put the 15-mile restriction around the Arvada area. So that prevents, let's say, a wildfire that may be occurring in an area of Jefferson County that's not near Arvada. That would not invoke an automatic ban. So this would have to be something that is within a reasonable wildfire fire danger proximity of the city limits.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Davis, you have the motion. Oh, Councilmember Woolweaver. Sorry, the light wasn't on. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. You actually, your last statement answered my question. That is, if there's a fire in Southern Jeffco, it doesn't necessarily impact our boundaries.
Yeah, that's correct. And then we would not implement that automatic ban.
Any additional light? Councilmember Davis, now you have the motion.
Okay, great. Thank you, City Manager Wick. I moved that CB-25-015, an ordinance amending, repealing, and reenacting various sections of Article III, Fire Restrictions or Bans of Chapter 42, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading numbered 4901 and ordered published by title only.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I just have comments. So, Don, I appreciate the fact, it seems like common sense, even if somebody else is doing it, makes, it's good to see common sense. I mean, if there's a ban within 15 miles, I think we should, it'd be automatic. I also appreciate the fact that you put a, you can pull the plug if you need to and adjust. So I'm totally supportive of this. But I also appreciate the fact that the gentleman from Penzi Spice, I think it's, it wasn't your voice for me. It was more of the content of what you said and how you related it to your business. That's pretty impressive, actually. I hope we can maybe work through his concerns through that because it makes sense to balance that approach. So as we think about common sense stuff, maybe this can fall into there as well and maybe address some of those concerns. Because I would hate to hear something like Old Town have an unfortunate situation. And we know it happens frequently down there. So again, thank you for your comments. I'll be supporting this for obvious reasons.
Excellent. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you. And thank you again, Mr. Wick, for clarifying how you're going to be handling those fire restrictions into the future that, I guess, it was kind of obvious to me, but you know what they say about assuming. So thank you so much for that clarification. And yes, I have put on my calendar for Thursday at 10 o'clock to visit Penzi Spices to take a look at the situation there. I don't cook, therefore, no need for spices. But I do want to take a look at the historic building and really thoughts around preventing fires so that we don't have anything catastrophic happen in Old Town. Thank you, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you. All right, with that, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. That concludes our public hearings for this evening's agenda. Next, I will open the public comment for the five-minute limit. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to speak at this time? Come on back. Name and address for the public record one more time.
Frank Farinaro, Penzi Spices, 7511 Grandview Avenue, Old Town, Arvada. What I did want to speak about before in just talking about the congruency with some of this fire code and fire safety, as we all know, Old Town has been here for 120 years, but we've watched Old Town change immediately when COVID hit. Some for better, some for worse. Honestly, where my business is, I think the street closures have been so much more for the better because we are one of the few family-friendly and family-centric and more specifically, non-alcohol-centric businesses on that strip. We want to make sure that our families, especially the ones that have children and fur babies, are safe. So the fact that we no longer have people speeding through there like they once were, whether it was through the speed mitigation projects or whether it was through the controlled closures that are in the streets there, that is absolutely great. What we are still navigating, even as new businesses come and go, is the patio areas for some of these businesses within the service industry. As some of these new businesses have come and they've been granted patio access, it has started to infringe upon some of our abilities in the non-service industry businesses to maintain their ADA compliance. So with these patios and then with addition of First or Fourth Fridays, Second Saturdays, any of the other large, amazing festivals that we all look forward to here in the area, I'm looking at my points of ingress and egress getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And that does cause concern for people, especially managers, when we want to make sure that, God forbid, there is such an issue as a fire or some sort of emergency where we need to evacuate the building or get people into our building into a point of safety quickly. With these patio areas, with them not, there needs to be more research, I think, done into making sure that they are, one, ADA compliant, and two, especially making sure that they're fire-safe in terms of having proper points of ingress and egress for any sort of entrance or evacuation. More specifically, as more patios are starting to face each other on the street proper itself, off of the sidewalk, I would like to see if we can confirm that fire trucks can fit between the areas. I've watched certain types of utility trucks and bulldozers struggle to get through the area. And lastly, coming from a position of trying to look at the position from a holistic way and utilizing all these resources, it has been difficult for some businesses to stay solvent and to stay successful. But for a lot of them, they have been. And even after COVID, we are still doing very, very well. But my question to the council is, as this resource of expanded patio service area has been granted to a lot of these businesses, one thing I do question is, as they've essentially been allowed to have their real estate footprint expanded. And if their real estate footprint has expanded, that is a discussion between the business and the property owner, how that affects their rent prices. What I would like to know is, does the council have any sort of governance or overseeing over the fact that now that their real estate footprint has increased, does that affect their property taxes at all? And if so, can the government utilize these resources for law enforcement, for our fire department, for any of these other resources that is funded by tax dollars, yourselves included? So while we, while our businesses and our neighbors might be appreciative for these resources that helped a lot of us weather the storm and keep our neighbors and our community strong and tight-knit together, I do want to make sure that the community's benefiting from all of our resources coming together. Because the fire department and the police department can't do everything on their own as a lot of these expirations and protections had to expire over time. And incrementally, I was happy to be a resource for the community when we got our smart surveillance system installed in our store and adjacent around the property. Ours was installed and went live before the city started implementing some of their smart surveillance systems. So as more police departments got more jurisdiction in the area, I was very happy to introduce myself and avail our resources with the surveillance to the Arvada Police Department, the RTD Police Department, the Colorado State Police, the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, as well as the local fire department. So again, this is something that I am very privileged with. We're not just a mom-and-pop shop. We're a mom-and-pop shop that flourished into a national presence. But with these resources that we have, we can only take them as far as the governments involved will allow us to. But if we are able to either advise or utilize our resources to help the government in making positive changes for the community, we're happy to do that as well. So that's just a question that I would like to bring before the council to see is, as you've been providing resources for the community, have they been also able to provide their community contribution as well? So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment and open it to reports from city council. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. One is that Jefferson County is seeking people to volunteer for its boards and commissions. So I just wanted to publicize Jefferson County's call for leaders to apply to their boards and commissions. The application closes on July 29th. So if you go to the Jefferson County website, you can see there are many, many boards and commissions that they need volunteers for. And then I also wanted to call attention to the call for the National Department of Education to release funds that it's holding from Colorado schools, 71 million. And so I joined the Colorado Education Association in asking that these funds be released to our local schools. Jefferson County was reported by Colorado Community Media. Our schools will be short by $3 million. And that short cannot be covered by the general budget from Jefferson County. These are federally allocated funds that can only be spent from federal dollars. And these were things to cover educator coaching, English as a second language, newcomer services, dropout prevention, trunsee interventions, and community outreach programs. This federal freeze is on top of already a $60 million deficit that Jeffco Schools was facing. So I feel in my responsibility as liaison to our school district to make the appeal that please release the federal funds and contact your legislators and representatives to put pressure on the Department of Education as it still stands to release these funds.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that I attended the Colorado Municipal League Conference and then the executive board meeting just recently. I want you to know that several of the members attended. It was a very good use of our time. We were able to learn a lot through the sessions that CML put on. And then also the opportunity to meet with other civic leaders to discuss possible solutions and approaches and working statewide and within the region to come up with tough ideas, tough solutions to tough questions. So I am very proud of my colleagues. We had a great time and the fellowship was amazing. And I want to thank you for allowing me that opportunity to become more broad in my understanding of what's going on statewide. Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. Wick, reports from the manager.
Just a reminder that this Saturday, the 19th, between 9:00 and 2:00 is the Firefighters Car Fest at Stinger. So that's always a fun event to attend. And also next Tuesday, there won't be a council meeting, but there will be appointee, council appointee evaluations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, anything from the attorney's office?
Nothing from the city attorney's office. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, with that, we stand adjourned.